Everybody ready? Okay. First thing off of fireworks, basically that company came and wants to sell fireworks in the Sam's parking lot, wanted a tent. Kind of put that to the side and address it and then vote on it and I want to bring it up again. Address it. What I'm gonna do is more than.
Would we allow other stores to sell product outside the store that they sell inside?
I, 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 my opinion is.
Like next work is whatever, like on the main store. And they sell some product and would we allow them to set up shop outside? I don't think so.
Well, the fireworks thing, we've done in the past, Bloomberg. It's by twin call there.
It's true that we allowed that. No, we definitely not that we voted on.
I, I wouldn't, I would.
You, I think we did then. I, I know we did.
Okay, so we're here now for my question.
I'm just saying, we've got it in the past.
I ask you.
Fireworks.
I don't want fireworks. Now, setting up, setting up a tent in front of your business to sell what you might, other stuff they might sell. Is something that has come up before?
Well.
But.
It's not, it's not. It's not on the site plan, but it is temporary. So, you know, I mean, I.
So here's the thing is that the, the, the premise, the principle has been that I would, we compete with someone that break in order that pay our taxes, that pay. Contribute to support. You know, the town residents. It's an outside business coming in. It doesn't make any sense. There's no advantage to the town. There's no advantage to anybody because it's already being sold. In Walmart, it's already being sold in other stores, I'm sure. So. I say no.
What if they want to do this?
The Sam's.
Sam's, yeah.
Going just with the tire.
Now, I want to.
Gas behind it, get like all the gas pumps together.
No, 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 it's not about the gas. They want to do it. Make the right, it's towards Sam. Go over to the right.
The parking lot where the trailers are.
Yes.
As they sell, right? The parking lots already.
Truck payment there? What?
The truck payment.
Where the trucks unload.
Now, now.
I thought it was in the back. I thought it was like, like, if this is the entrance, it was, it was.
Road in and out.
Towards, towards the road.
Yes.
Where it's closer to the road.
Yeah.
Road that comes in. Before you turn in sand, you turn in sand, so you're gonna make a way. It's the parking lot right here. So if this is a gas.
Closer to safety.
Gas pumps, it's here, the driveway into Sam's boat is here. That's what you're saying?
It's, you know, when, I'm not talking about that first one, I'm talking about the one where the light is.
Right, where they sent the trailer up.
When they say quiet auto glass?
Yes, across from that road from the safety. Uh huh. The last place, right in that area.
So it's kind of the entrance of the trains.
Exactly.
Have you been Sam's parking lot?
Yeah.
It's not overcrowded. Especially on. Yeah, holiday.
Okay. Anybody else?
It's already done.
Still want to know what you think about it.
Necessarily seeing that you.
I'll let them know. You know? Yes. Next, uh, this is the hardship application. It came in to see us. So. Decision.
Imposes.
Points of public and I think that we are discussing. And we decide that whatever decision we made that. We are actual to that decision. Both.
After it's.
So you remember they came in?
Yeah.
The hardship over there by Crystal One.
I know the letter today.
What the letter?
Yep, from the attorney. Supplement. Didn't send any email to them. Really didn't, basically confirming that. The letter from Mr. Coser today, he knows. Confirming that they're going with the exact plan. That the town board approved when it allows them to go to the planning board, which is two buildings, one three hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred square feet. The other one eighty-two thousand square feet, which are the exact numbers.
What's the?
When they came to.
One hundred thousand billable square feet. Both the same terms in contact that they would give minimum of four hundred and six hundred billable square feet.
Uh huh, that's what his contract says.
So that's what he's gone both that, yeah.
They were talking, his petition. They were talking about a total of three hundred and twenty-one thousand square feet, which was not in line with the sales contract. Which is what I asked them. So now, in this. Alter, this additional submission, he's confirming that it's going to be a total of four hundred and three thousand five hundred square feet. Which number one is in line with the contract that he's got. And number two, it's an exact conformity with the resolution that the town board approved in twenty twenty. To allow him to go to the function.
But he did say when he was here that it was going to be a reduced size from your random, right?
Yeah. But this letter he sent today. This letter shows how to supplement my client petition. And to the extent there's any variance or conflict with the petition or any testimony rendered. Of appearing the contents of this letter show prevailing control. Basically, they're saying. This controls over petition, they're building four hundred and three.
Right, so. You asked them to get that, his, his premise when he was here. Uh, we, we can build bigger, but we're not, we're going to be smaller. Yeah, so when you follow, take this down right. He gives us the lesson that, okay, we can't give it to you in writing, it's going to be what it is.
It's going to be inconformant with the twenty twenty. And it fits within his contract. Which is a minimum of four. So that's what.
Discussion.
So, you know. We can't turn back time and if we could. I have a. Different opinion to give a warehouse in that location, to warehouse. But. The, their request is when exception. Um, consideration that, that it's causing a hardship to the owner. And the hardship is that he has a buyer and they want to close on it. Not giving him the exception, it's, is just holding up the sale because. After the moratorium, after we get all the paperwork and all the language written for the moratorium. It's still going to be as is right here in front of us, what Will pointed out, it'd still be the same. He's got that prior approval, he's got the resolution that we voted on, so nothing that we do from this day forward is going to change that.
And if we adopt. Policy now and make law that warehouses would fit. This. Vision that we have from town. Anybody that's already got something in there. You know, before us, we kind of need, couldn't say no, change the zoning, let's say, in an area that we're already working to do something. And again, if you change the zoning once something's already in, somebody owns your property. Let's stop the fight.
Well. He has, he has no preliminary approval. So he can't even be grandfathered.
Well, no, this isn't a question grandfather. This is a question of letting this applicant proceed through the planning board process and finish it up. That's what this is.
Right, and he's already been before the plant, so started the process.
He just hasn't gotten to the point where he accepted from the moratorium, he doesn't have secret approval, he doesn't have. Any preliminary approvals, he's asking to be able to go forward with the process. And that's what's important. I'm okay with it.
Well, like I said, Eric said, in the end, we didn't really change much anyway. Change anything at all. It'll be, well, just a few more months down the road than what it currently is.
Well, if something changes. The law. By whatever. Would he be subject to that? Because he has no approval.
The resolution says. Let's say. For example. The code was changed. And moratorium is such. It's the moratorium will go red, so the code's changed. It's got the resolution, he's subject to coming down.
The original.
Yeah. That's the point, and that's the point, and one of the points that's made.
But so if the zone is changed.
Well. It's zoned right now for. Well. He's allowed, he's allowed to proceed with warehouse plan that was in the OR, I mean, met the other requirements to satisfy the town board's whatever look forward. With his use.
But it is changed, that, it doesn't affect.
It doesn't affect them because he's still got the language from the twenty twenty, that's the reason, he's subject to his own use. It was in place.
So it really is, you know, because I know there's going to be others, if, if there are, if they aren't already, but this, in, in my view, this. Really is a hardship in the sense that it's transactional sale and it's not a, a, a stoppage of what they currently have. So. To, to Will's point, nothing, and I've said this already, nothing's going to change in this day forward. No matter what we do in the moratorium. And, and the changing of the application of the zoning and everything, he has prior approval. So.
I'm just gonna. Waiting five months and then. Oh.
Why? Why?
Not to the town, but to the applicant.
To the applicant, like, why do that to the town? You know what I mean? I think that's all we're doing. It's, it's preventing him from.
Yeah, and if he sells it, they don't do anything with it, they. Up to them.
And it's still going to take him a few months to go before the plan for it anyway.
So we're preventing, we're not preventing selling.
But the buyer won't buy it unless he can move forward.
Yeah.
Project. So we kind of are stopping the sales temporarily.
It's just so clear, only the restrictions and zoning laws relevant to the property. In effect, at the time that the special use permit application is submitted to the planning board. Shall control any future development for the project site. Whether such laws and restrictions are reduced in any fashion. So. He's. Very submitted the special permit act, special use permit application playing. If they hadn't submitted yet, that would.
But they haven't acted on it yet.
Planning board hasn't because. He's allowed to proceed, he's either going to get approval or he's not, and he's still rolling the dice that he's either going to get it or he's not planning.
All right, um. The, uh, later decision.
I can hear from everybody.
Yep.
Well.
I, I, I've said, right, I'm, I'm all for. Granted. In the end, same, so we're not going to make a change.
All right, so I'm instructed to draft the decision for the board to.
Yeah, yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, uh.
One second.
Yeah, cool. Yep.
Okay.
What else?
Okay, just want to let everyone know. Hotel tax, people now. Senate, the Senate passed the bills. From the governor's desk, we have a suggestion. I mean, what's our, we'll have our extension.
It's another five years. Two, two, oh, it's in.
But it's originally proposed by the Senate. Like the last one. And then the Senate came in, I understand. The Senate came in and said they're only approving these types of extensions for two years. So the Senate had a reminder bill. At both houses, and then two, two years. Once the governor signs it, I'll prepare a local law. Prior to hopefully she gets it signed. In the next. Batch, or at least. Well, before, before September.
September.
Oh, it runs in September. It's September, so we have to have. Uh, we have to get our local law done and filed prior to September one technically. So we still need to keep it very close. What? You know, we're going to have to keep it closely monitored. So we know as soon as the governor hopefully signs it. And then we'll go ahead and schedule a public hearing. For the local. And all will be right with the world.
Also, then. Uh, okay, next, uh, next resolutions, I make a motion to table the first resolution.
Second.
On a favor. You. Next.
It's gonna be on.
So, okay. Uh, we have financials, you have.
Uh, I think she, I think someone just sent financial. Since I saw it, I get email with financial, might have been, no, I gotta look.
So. You know, I haven't seen it before. Um, but now that we're at salaries, I see quite a number of stipends. And I, I don't remember them ever doing it.
Well, I did ask about the different salaries. As I got was, uh, depending on where they are returning.
And there was a chart, yes, and. Returning, first year. Those types of different interests. Second year. Right, second year. But they've been given stipend through C I T.
Council and. Council and.
Right, yeah, yeah. Yeah, they don't get paid by the half, they get a flat. And the nurse gets it. Just like. The salary you said, as a salary.
Yeah, we have a salary for the person that's running. The director, the lifeguard, and now we're giving a stipend. And head directors and coordinators.
The corner is getting now.
I just raised it because I, I don't have a, I'm doing that. Did they do it last year?
So many did, we just.
Never, never saw it.
So something like this, something like this.
I don't see all these names like this. So they were related. Supposed to be, I don't question the numbers name.
Stipends have been, but I think they've been announced stipends, like. Product director, head of respiratory, people around the like the civilian, but the coordinators, it's always been. Someone that does that.
I think they should use the word. But the difference is. Just stipends. When I take them out for. I don't know what they. Or employees, these ones who are salaried.
So is this. Well, that's a good question, this stipend on top of their hourly salary. That is the salary.
The risk so hourly rate, like the nurse.
But I might, the stipends are based on, those are positions that are not hourly. So what happens with those positions, if in fact, say a director ends up staying. You know, they weren't major board, but they end up having to stay at five thirty to cover after camp. That's understood in their stipend.
That was fine, but just.
Again, it could be the verbiage, I'm not sure.
Just, just so we're clear, we're not deducting each week for payroll. The responsible for your own taxes. They're not recovering. But. They make it covered by the boys and girls, but, but if the town, you know. I got, depends how they're, how they're getting paid for it.
Right. That, that might need to be clarified, maybe the verbiage, but I know, like I said.
You know, the nurse accidentally gets injured or sticks herself. Or something. It's not covered.
When they call it a stipend, salary.
Or insurance security. Like. They're responsible. They would get it then, or not. Well, if you get the W two on a site. Because we're not taking out.
Yeah. Okay, that's the I T.
So I think the wording is, is probably misleading, so stipend should be a salary.
It can be a flat salary.
Broken up eight each week, however, but it's still.
It's still. Needs to be clarified.
So I believe even the stipend, they call it stipend on the income. They get to tax.
But they can't call it a stipend.
Like, then it's still got a.
In a table.
Yeah, it's a salary, it can be a flat salary. And that's fine, they can take the deductions out, but. We need to, we need to change this word to. You know, fixed salary.
All right, I make a motion to issue this.
I don't know, we need to, supervisor, I'm saying, we need to inform them that the category is not stipend, it's fixed salary for summer.
Right, so. This is a plan that we've got from down the night, I don't, I don't want to change it until we speak to them.
That's fine, so.
Uh, I wish you.
When do they, when are they, they're not starting, I just, the end of. I'm trying to reset for resolution. Right. Right, that's what I'm saying, all right. I, I think we can go on. All right. And I think it's okay to vote on it and change the word stipend to fix seasonal salary.
So I'm making sure that they, they do what you mean here.
Yeah.
I make a motion to change stipend to fix seasonal salary.
Throughout the resolution for each of the divisions that is listed as a stipend. I don't want a second time, but. Favor of the resolution. They know.
Yes. Yeah.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
With Allison.
Yeah. Yes.
Resolution, the town, when the town board, when the town supervisor asks to announce some benefits from the purpose of signage, the inclusion of mention. With the channel of. Violet. You call the panel, do you buy elephants? Arfa slash. A salary. F R X bonds, or the focus of the. Or such signage and the town phone caller order dissipates here by the revenue to the town. For the project. Seven, three dollars and twenty-two cent allocation on the public schedules of the town's financial points. Budget code D A five one zero dash four one one.
So move.
George. The two will be. Prior to the. You know.
By, yeah, yes.
And then there'll be one app screen on the show.
With a, with a, tomorrow to do. I will go from done.
And that's for every location, right? More like motorcycle. Where they.
Your point?
Yes.
Allison?
Yes.
De Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah.
Supervisor.
Yes.
As long as the town with town of all killers and brings for funds, we're not looking out here by result, and we're. Authorized us and directs us on comfort, we bring some positive respect for the fourth and free channel of this fall. From A five nine nine zero, one balance, one thousand dollars, two, one six seven zero four one, free postage, twenty thousand dollars. This increase of the budget to cover the cost of increasing postage, if for mail in. From D A two six eight zero, we found the numbers thirty-four thousand eight nine six two, D A five one zero dash two three vehicles. Thirty-four thousand eight nine six, this increase of the budget on. Of data, third vehicles. And from A two seven zero five, this is a range to the dollars, two A seven seven, seven five five zeros. Dash four eight one five, fishing, the three hundred dollars. Except a degree.
So more. Yes.
Mr. Meyer? Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Super supervisor.
Reporting resolution of the number of hours.
I want, I want to do that. I need to look at some similar numbers, there's some information I've got, I want to go over and check.
Obviously, there's deadlines.
Any elected tissue. You're supposed to do in the course that I liked it, but technically. Um, everyone is, and you know, putting into that, you can wait to make your.
We have a letter from. Uh, country integrity.
Right.
That's today is the cutoff or the names that are.
Nice to be there.
I should then that one.
Right. But my. I was gonna go through some.
I submitted mine when I was with them.
I, I need to look at it, I can't just. I need to look at some of the numbers.
You can't look at the numbers, you can look at the. What the description is of what.
No, I, the number is based on, um. I was up in the morning. And I was looking, he gave me the formula, and the number, I haven't been able to do that, now I'm going to do that tomorrow.
Well, inside, I'm mailing the R O S, right, I'm filling in the X box, because my retirement is not going to be compromised. Because somebody doesn't have time to look at something. It's a, it's a simple calculation, George, it's times it by three, divided by six. And you get the numbers, involved on the document. And. We're going to be suspended from your state retirement, and I think Eric got the letter, says that what I didn't sign on a payment, so. We've got issues with the retirement people already, and I don't think we can start picking by. Well, I've been here thirty-three point seven years, and I'm not playing games for anybody, and I'm sending my big frickin'.
Let me ask this question. If. It's done. And it's sent, or thrown out by, and there's something that has to be amended, that you've done, right?
Well, what has to happen is when you vote on that resolution tonight, and we have to post that. And then we have to let them know within the two days that we've done that.
Okay, but I'm saying, if there's something that has to be corrected, it can be.
That's what, yes, that's what we're doing now, we're correcting things and we can get them votes or.
So what you're saying is, if we start the process, that if. Somebody reviews it. And there needs to be a change to it, that can be done. I believe that can be done.
I haven't.
Can you change it? Yes, I'm okay with it.
Change, yes, I'm okay with.
Then, well.
Eric, can you. You just made your R O A.
No, I did not.
Well, you don't have to remember the one.
Um, I spoke to the state and. Uh, I'm okay with submitting it later on. So. I I mean, they. They want it on time, they want it at a certain point, but. Um, I can submit later on. Yeah, my my suggestion, I can submit it tomorrow, I can submit it Friday. Doesn't, or it's not going to, as long as they get it, that's.
It comes to me. And I hope it will not happen.
But we still need to do the resolution though, so.
For today, posted, and there needs to be a correction. We can notify all, I think that's the best. And that's the best course. So.
And we.
Always, always. But there is an issue with what time is full time that we ordered it, what up? Is that resolved?
Uh, I I haven't, I really have not looked at. I was up in Albany, I saw, I got the paperwork, I looked at it, and I have not been able to look at the R O A. I will print, I will print it out. Tomorrow and look over it, okay?
Bring, it's three months of your charge.
Well, three months of your, yes, three months of time you have to. Detail what you've done for three months. The original thing should have happened.
Within the first.
First anything.
Hundred and eight days.
Something you were elected.
Right, that's the beginning.
First three months, however. No. It's calculated, I mean, it's possibly. But for purposes. Compliance, starting with compliance. It should be done tonight, if there are any directions to this, it can be done during. The posting here. And.
Are you guessing at that, please?
I'm not guessing at it, but it's, but I. I'm saying. That that's what we're gonna have to do, whether they accept it or not, there has to be a vote on it by the first. Is what. And if it's, it's correct for accuracy, I will certainly make the case to them, it's better to have that. Than accept something that's not accurate. That's what.
We we. Haven't done this. Over the last couple of years. I did extra always. Waiting, waiting, they have to be now corrected, that's the bottom line.
The R O As have been submitted to the state, the ones that were collected. Why your folks in the front of the building said they didn't have them is beyond me, because all of those are in my office. Were some of us folks that have provided them, so why they say. No.
They're saying my folks in front of the building.
No, they're they're comfortable.
Right. They said they didn't have.
They said they didn't have them, which is actually not true, because Tobias asked me for them, I gave him my entire folder. These documents have to be kept, uh, for years.
Right.
So.
All right, let's move on and then.
So.
Change, then change it up and.
Do, oh, we need to put numbers in there, that's mine's not in that thing.
Yeah, your number was added. This is the article.
Okay, that's what you're saying. I see you got a number, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Before we post this, we'll. It's the last. So.
The other one, did it copy of it?
We'll make copies.
You gotta give me something.
Well, this one. Where.
I added Mr. Johnson.
He was. John's. So. The copies is ready. That.
That's what will be on the resolution. So.
That's the resolution.
No, this is the, that's we vote on it.
I voted on it. Right. Okay. So. The issue that was raised by the. That it addressed.
And was not addressed because I hadn't looked at it. I haven't looked at it. I look at the numbers. Remember, this is one thing, much reported on a monthly basis and something else. Two different.
That is now. And maybe more copies of this.
Maybe one.
What? You guys want copies now? Anyone?
Yes.
Okay.
What? Great.
Who was that letting? That's being voted on.
Sorry.
When was that letting?
The letter came to us, uh, at the end of the. And some.
Or. More. Yep. Just.
Okay, so. What's mine? Minister of State stuff. I sort of tried to prepare this. The initial type of request probably went. At the end, it didn't mean dollars on its case, and. This one thing we can refer, I wanted to review on three on. By by major first. Um, from files by minutes, such meaning same. We got the. Uh. And all such. It's tough, it's definitely. But so. The thirty days.
Which is the priority, I'm looking at that evening. It would be Chris Strickland. So he says, what does he do at the end of the month? He said that he made, the end of the month. Of the end of the month of forty, he considered he living happens the seventh month of the following. The seventh of the following month. So he's saying, like.
Oh, that's, that's different from this, but they're looking. Excellent. That's something.
That's what this thing.
That's the one that come down.
Mm hmm.
I don't want to.
So it's not this?
No, so. Post is on the website and assigned.
With the. With the social.
Read that, yeah.
Also, can you read that, there were timing numbers?
What?
There were timing numbers. Awesome.
And I guess we prove that their, their document normally. It was just a. So. One of you don't take a. Or tonight. And.
Okay.
We can leave that down.
Said before. That. You have this ridiculous term or something.
Each. You do it each turn. When you do your turn. Your R O A that you submitted, it goes eight years, so you got to get a form. To say you want to use that R O A, R O A that you submitted before, that every year, every term you gotta submit that form. Eight years.
But do I go back and see the previous shares as R O As or that form covers that?
Covers it, because once you submit this R O A, it covers you.
For eight year period.
Yes, as long as you do that form, same.
So have you got that form that. You should do this one. If it was clear and higher and they showed. There's a, that form is something to have.
You can find it online. For a non-photosite or a consent, but it's all sort of a verification form. Put the date that you did the removal, and then you. Say that you can. All.
They were like that. And you have the communities and.
Yeah, so yeah, you should all do. All of you, then.
The judge. The.
So, um, all of that is all.
Yes, so you have to call for a motion.
Make a motion to. Approve the. Resolutions regarding. The system.
Standard worth.
Standing work. A reporting resolution by like.
Thank you.
This point, yes.
Yeah. Yes.
So.
Yes.
Yes.
Alrighty, hold on, so can we just bring one thing up, um, so you get to do a public hearing. For this. So you have some calls about, uh, you know, the our circle over there, Geno and. Shut.
Shut.
Right. So when you, if you go on to. You know. Is that curb? Been a few accidents there. And somebody just brought to my table, hey, maybe you could put a sign there saying, you know, then you curb. I don't know, I I don't see the control navigating it, but but, you know, I guess, hey, all people have. And if you look back, what happened was up by near the Mount Hope border.
We don't. We can put a sign up.
Uh, don't we?
No, it's not, it's not a.
Stop sign.
We're not establishing a stop intersection or a no parking.
Okay.
It's, you know, traffic control sign, yellow or.
Oh.
Precautionary signs. Yeah. It's before.
So, so if you come up shut and you hit the round.
Roundabout.
I don't want to call it roundabout.
Drift circle.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Roundabout.
And you. But they're going to.
Drift circle.
I think they just put all that in there.
And you make a right off to Geno. You know, you take that first exit. And then there's a bend, probably, I don't know, two hundred feet up the road, three hundred feet up the road, whatever the hell it is, you know? And, uh. You know, but but again, you know, it sounds silly, because, you know, I drive it every day, I never. Almost went off the road, but.
Somebody doesn't know.
We remember. We remember.
Yeah.
Okay, would I say it out loud? So now can I make a motion to have. Sign put back.
Sign.
What, what specifically you sign?
What?
That was our.
Well, we'd have to look at it. Basically, if it's a precautionary curve, a head sign, it could just be a curve.
Yeah, that's what I'm. Would be the motion.
No.
No.
No, you can put that up, can't you? As long as it conforms to them.
Yes.
I think they could study easier and easier.
Alright, good, thank you.
We have the appropriate pair of signs on. I'll find out. I think. There was sort of a sign.
That was important.
That's it.
Thank you. Uh, motion to. Look at executive. Personal.